All right, now we will call our council meeting over there. Everyone please rise up for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that all council members are present this evening. And I think we can begin with a prayer. Pastor Brown.
Yeah, that's right. Our Father God, we're so thankful for all the blessings you've showered on us all these many, many decades. We thank you for our community, our town, and for the grace that has helped us through good times and a few bad times. And Father, we just ask for your blessings on this meeting, at your great wisdom, to each of the board members, and that you guide all discussions. And would everything be done for the benefit of this town? We ask that you give it a beating. Christ name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Joey. All right, we have meeting minutes from our July fourteenth meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
All in favor? All right, meeting's approved as written. We'll move on to reports. Looks like Luke is absent. We don't have any kind of utility report from either him or our operator this evening. Jennifer, do you have a report for the council?
The only thing I have to report is Center Point did fix the alley today.
Nice.
Over there, so that was nice. Went to Home Depot to check on the countertops for the shutter house. And I emailed them pictures, so they said that they, I'm waiting to hear back from them, but they thought they might do a site visit. And then they were gonna send it on to the contractors. So we'll see what happens there. Luke did want me to tell you that the park mall, he was able to get it from Philburn for two thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars versus, it was like a little over three thousand. And that will be delivered, they said, within the next week. They would give them a phone call the day before. You have my wire report. Other than that, that's it.
Some questions for Jennifer? All right, code enforcement, Luke is not here. We don't have an attorney tonight. Mr. Piper, do you have anything for us?
No, I'm usually just gonna go once a month with my report, but I was here with those, and also a little situation with the old Walt's property.
Okay.
So this one did.
So it seems that they've started building down there. I don't know if y'all have seen that, but that is in our building area. And as I understand it, there's no no contact has been made with the town. They just started building.
Yeah, I was informed that they were there yesterday, so I stopped there yesterday and talked to the lady that's actually just living in the house renting off of the owner. So that's a construction company that owns that. So there's two different partners in that. And they went back out there this morning when they were out there and talked to them. And actually, they got me in contact with one of the partners who's out in Small. And he came up and got the paperwork.
Okay.
And the application, so that's.
So they do intend to comply? They're gonna?
Yeah.
Uh, south of town between two hundred and eighty-first and what is that, two eighty-six?
Where that barn used to be, they got that framing up in the back there.
And that's a, that's a chicken coop.
Oh, is that what they're building?
It's a very fancy chicken coop. It's
The big one?
I don't know. It may be twenty by sixty, and it's gonna have, I think, four separate bays in it. So that, that's what it is.
Wow.
Did they give?
Wayne Farley, you made eight one five several nineteen. Did they, are they gonna continue to build or red tag it, or are they just gonna keep going?
Well, I don't know if he turned in his information.
He has not, too.
So he was gonna fill out what he needed to fill out, his application and information and site plan and all that. And get it back to me. He was hoping to do it today. So he's, he's complying. I mean, the only thing I didn't see that I needed to see was the footing. The rest of it
Sure.
is obvious.
Is it my hands or anything where people can look at it, see what is built? Is this the, or is it just kinda?
Well, right now, it's just the
They don't have any type of?
Oh, plans for the property?
Yeah.
Is it all one property and they're gonna divide it up, or do we even know yet?
No, it's all one property. I forget what he
But it's gonna be multiple, is it gonna be multiple houses, or do they?
No, they told me that it was just gonna be that chicken coop, and they're gonna keep it as a farm. And it's gonna, they're gonna build a pole barn, and they're gonna rebuild the barn that was there, that got
It's listed on, it's listed on Exactix, which is our locate software as a subdivision.
Yeah, that's, I guess, another question I need to ask, what that's all about, because.
And I actually have heard from a couple other people around Noblesville about, they know the, one of the partners in that, talking about maybe development, so I don't know.
Well, I don't, they're not taking any of the steps they need to take, other than, I don't know how they got it on map for us, but
Okay.
So I'll have to talk to them about that, too, I guess. They seem to be pretty cooperative and
Well, at least they're, they're compliant for the building they are building, but hopefully they
The guy I talked to was one of the partners, and it wasn't the one that actually owns the property. But it's one of the partners of the business. So he actually came to the, to the office and
Did he not know he had permits, or is he just kinda?
Well, what he
Some just knows it.
What he says, we told his partner that he needed a permit, and his partner didn't get it, so that was his, his reasoning.
Just didn't do it. Okay. Any questions for Rick? Do you need anything from us?
No, I guess just, I was gonna talk to the attorney, just procedure maybe, and how you guys wanna handle that type of situation.
Yeah, I, I think on a personal level, it probably doesn't, seeing some kind of an official document probably doesn't feel that good, but I, I do think it's probably good to get them on, on record and writing somehow to that person if, if they're violating. I mean, that way they've got it, we've got a record of it, and everybody's kinda playing by the same rules, I mean.
If you don't, it's gonna, you know, a little
Yeah.
Somebody's gonna start building his house and get it halfway done and say, oh, I got my permit.
Right, or you never told me, or I didn't know, or something like that, you know? Even if you talk to them, they could still say, well, I don't remember that.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Probably somebody will let us know about it if somebody's doing that.
I've seen the equipment down there. That's been there for a couple of weeks, and I didn't see really anything going on.
No, I thought they were just doing some dirt work or something like that, and all of a sudden it looked like they were building.
Yeah, they did. Noticed that this morning.
That's all I've got.
All right, well, thank you. Before we go any further, we had complaints about people not being able to hear particularly well on the recording from the last meeting, so if you have a lot to say in, or, yeah, we'll probably see if you can use the podium, otherwise, if it's just a short question, we'll just try to probably repeat the question that you asked before we answer. But we do wanna still maintain the raise your hand when we're at a point where we can address your question, we'll call on you, and then please introduce yourself and then proceed. We'll go on with old business, so part-time help. So y'all had some contact with some of the applicants there?
Yes, Tim and I interviewed three applicants last Thursday, and interviews went well. I would love to recommend, make a motion that we, we hire tonight. I have a gentleman, his name's Matthew Stringer. Felt that he was the best qualified for the position.
What's his availability?
He's available Tuesday.
Okay, but as much or as little, as, because I think for festival, we could probably keep somebody busy around the clock, but
Yes.
You know?
Yep. So
He particularly had an interest in mechanical fixing things, sharpening blades.
Sure.
As well as Like that, as well as grounds keeping work.
Okay.
Of course he did, right?
Arcadia?
He's a retired gentleman, so he's looking for something to do.
Twenty-seven forty East two hundred and sixty-sixth Street. So, out west of, west of town, actually. That's an Arcadia address.
He's actually here this evening.
Yeah, he is. He's, he's with us tonight.
Oh, he is. He's right there.
My holister.
Is he a licensed, licensed kid or?
Oh, no.
This is just for additional manpower for now.
Labor, yes.
We need, we need help.
So I would like to entertain a motion, make a motion that we hire Mr. Stringer for part-time help.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, sir.
You guys.
As we shared with him, he'll, he'll, Jennifer will make arrangements for him to go take his drug test form.
Whatever paperwork needs done, and then yeah, it'll be kind of a mix. You're, you're kinda working, I suppose you'd be working alongside the guy that we've already got, Luke, helping him. But what we'll probably continue to do on a weekly basis or so is, is kinda continue to build out a list and hopefully things can get knocked off the list, and then we'll add more. And we'll just work that way for a little bit, I think, but I, I trust you'll be a big help in getting us back where we need to be, so thank you.
Can we get his pay rate in the minutes, please, the twenty dollars an hour?
Yes.
You guys have talked to him about.
Yeah, it's in accordance with our ordinance, as I recall, it's in that range, so
Yes.
Let's do a somebody do a motion for that.
I make a motion that his salary would be twenty dollars an hour.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, again, sir, thank you.
How pay my board so many hours coming over?
Back off a little bit. All right, Town Garage Stream, I haven't gotten that yet. I'll have that before the next meeting, I will. Ball Diamond, I don't know why it's on here. Did they?
I've got in your packet, you have a list of individuals that are interested in there.
Okay.
While you're on the ball, don't you?
Yeah.
When it cools down get down and straighten out that property before you get stuck.
Sure, no, absolutely. We can do that. Yeah, a hundred percent, and if it's a day when I'm not working, I'm happy to help with it, too, so let's let's make sure everybody's where they need to be, for sure. We'll, we'll help with that. Yeah, well, maybe we'll have a good stretch of weather in August sometime. Uh, let's see.
Are these folks just general inquiries, or is anyone serious about?
No, I think they're all pretty serious.
Do we have the okay to give them a price?
Well, I was hoping the attorney would be here tonight, so I could see the exact process. I'm going through this, we
They have some interest in it?
Yeah.
Lots of people.
Ball Diamond or Mark the Brand or?
I, I don't know, it's probably a mix.
Yeah, I think it's a mix.
There's one on here that's rather interesting, Indianapolis Indians. I don't know what that means, but
Maybe they're gonna move out here, man.
Atlanta Bananas.
Atlanta Bananas.
We, we will. It's just one of those things, we gotta go get made. Certainly before festival, we'll get something up. I think that'd be wise. Yeah, we wanted to do that earlier this year, but we've gotten sidetracked by a few things, so okay, do we have any other Ball Diamond discussion from anybody, council?
Are they done now?
Uh, well, they're still under contract. They're, yeah, so they, I believe their contract for usage went through the end of the month, but they're still supposed to maintain it the rest of the year, as far as Mullen goes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's written in their contract, so I don't know what that means. It's probably not necessarily as won't look as pretty, but they're gonna keep it mowed. Mowed and reeded, at least reasonably so. Okay, that stop sign, has everybody driven down there and seen that? It's Kaufman in Indiana?
I, I was standing talking to Denny when somebody brought him through there at high rate speed, so even, even with the increased Atlanta Arcadia police, there's still people who I, I know there was an issue with putting one on going south.
That's difficult without taking out a tree, I think.
Right, but, I mean, we could still put one on north, go north on the south side of the road. They got a three-way stop to start with.
So Southbound would be able to just keep going? For an idea, we're taking out a tree. Agreed.
Okay.
I mean, it's a town tree. I know he thinks they're, he likes them, he thinks they're his, and he planted them, but like
He did say, keep it trimmed better.
I, I think that I think it's worth taking a tree out, put a four-way stop. Would take the middle one out or the end?
No, damn.
The end, yeah. What was the going rate last year for cutting down trees, about?
About twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's a small tree, though. I don't know if that, if it would be that much, but I haven't even paid attention to them. Those ones there might need some help before festival anyway, so I don't know. Maybe it wouldn't make sense to get a price for a couple different probably wouldn't, just for safety concerns, especially for festival. Yeah. And come out and just do a
Well, I, I don't know. What do you think, Murray? Do you think we need one there or no?
I don't know that it's gonna hurt anything to put it there. I don't know how much it'll help.
Only if people decide to stop.
Sure.
I can bet, and I'm gonna say this, property owner is requesting a stop sign, but I bet if you say, hey, we gotta cut this tree down, he's gonna say, no. I don't wanna stop sign. I don't want the tree cut.
Six years ago, they tried that, it didn't go good. With the property owner.
Right.
We need spurring for turds. Which can't have a boat, but
No, you can't. I mean, I looked at it.
The tree's in the town.
It is, it is. It's in the town. I mean, if we decide to cut it down, we cut it down, but it
Is there a policy the town has of planting trees in right ways, or you just let them do it?
You need to have approval. But we don't necessarily have that written down as neatly as we would like to. So that is one of the things that we started looking at shortly after I came on the council, like six years ago, and then got on to other things. I think we do need a tree ordinance. Maybe list specific tree or ban specific trees, that'd be the thing to do. Ban specific trees that are high nuisance trees. And then actually spell, maybe have some kind of a forming attached to that for requesting to be able to plant a tree or something like that. Streamline that process. There is, there is stuff in there that specifically says right, and there is stuff in there that specifically says, like, no bushes, shrub, stuff like that, too, which I know they exist in certain places around town, but particularly around a corner, like, that's a, that's a big deal.
Fifteen feet vision.
Yeah, there's a vision clearance triangle. I do believe it is fifteen or twenty feet, and then you connect the points, and so you're supposed to be able to see. So you could think, we're not necessarily compliant with that at every intersection, but we certainly try not to allow stuff to be out to the corner. Just to make things easier for everybody.
Well, I know there's a newer family living on that corner with several children. They're always playing out in front yard, so that's right on the corner.
Sure.
And so, I think that's
Kind of catty corner for him, you're saying?
Yeah, I think that's why Dan's pushing for it, because they're scared, but
Yeah, it, it might be a good idea. It is a well-traveled street. You know, state law says you can't do a stop sign for controlling speed, but if it's for
Safety.
Safety concerns, it might make a lot of sense.
Do they have a children-in-place sign?
There is a one.
There isn't one, but we might have something in our inventory. Look.
So are we gonna contact Danny and see if or does it matter at this point?
Well, I think
Out courtesy of
Yeah. Just pull up here one day with a truck and cut a tree down. I mean, we can do that.
Not wanna do that, I'm just asking what's
Yeah, we can do that.
I, I do think that it, it probably makes more sense than not to have the stop sign. It's kind of the way I'm thinking.
And I don't know that there's any space to put that stop sign there with that tree.
Right.
Does it sink, sink top?
It would be, it'd be a low one.
Yeah, it'd have to be lower, or it'd have to be set back.
I don't think you could do that. There's standards for height.
It'd have to be set back so far from the intersection.
You don't want it out hanging over the corner either, so it can't be all the way at the end of the road.
Set back. I don't know what the standard is for that.
Find that out to stop sign standards. Okay. Would somebody is, would one of y'all like to talk to Denny and tell him just kinda what we're thinking?
I can talk to him.
Okay. All right.
You want to talk about sidewalk some of the old business?
Uh, we can do it under old business. Library's on here, let's touch on that real quick. I don't have anything new there, but I don't know if anybody else has any library building related business.
Where are we on that? We have, we got the permit back from the state, is that correct?
Yeah, so we, we've really gotta find somebody that could start doing some construction. I think we need to start with a mason. But, but it needs to be somebody that can kind of make it look like it was never done when they're done, you know?
When they install it.
Putting the doorway in, so that the, the elevator then can be installed. I wrote a list down last weekend of everything that's kind of fallen through the cracks, and a mason is on there, and I still haven't called anybody, so written it down again. If, if anybody knows of a very high-end mason that you can think of, that you could maybe recommend to the town? Any of you all, or anybody here, we'd appreciate your efforts.
I can get a hold of some.
Okay.
I know
I, I mean
They're gonna forward and choose.
Okay, yeah, I'd appreciate that. We're, we're looking for somebody that, you know, isn't just like can build something that won't fall down. It, it needs to look like it was never done. It needs to match the building and all that stuff, so
Call Indiana lawn marks.
Okay, that would be great. See if they've got any recommendations as well, yeah. If you could, if you wouldn't mind getting Jennifer a, a list of people, if you know some people, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, they all lie since they were here.
Sure. All right, well, thank you, sir. Okay, all right, let's move on to the sidewalk deal. Have you had a chance to identify some segments?
I have. I, I didn't know how many you wanted. From what our conversation was, I thought you wanted me to, to stick with what festival is first, the festival roots. And the three that really need done are here on Main Street. Those are the three worst ones that have been marked out in yellow.
Yeah, I, so I marked those, and I kind of figured that would be something extra, but would probably just come out of the general fund, not counting. I, because I would like to get it like a block or two of sidewalk down. I mean, we've been talking about this since I was a little kid.
Yeah, I, so I, my thought was, from what we had talked about, was I thought we were just gonna go try to repair things. The worst ones first to try to get it done. If it's not in the festival purview, the one on Walnut there between your house and, and the library is the worst one in town.
Okay.
Across from Ron's house. That, that whole stretch is horrible. If, if we're gonna do a big project, that would be the one I would focus on.
Okay.
If we're gonna do hit-or-miss things to, to fix things before festival, I would do those three, and then north of Main on Broadway there's a house right there that's got a really big
Yeah.
dip. And also, right next to your dad's house, I have the address.
Oh, yeah, between there and
Between your dad's house and Miss Neal's house, there's, there's a really bad stretch right there, and those are probably the worst ones in town in, in the festival area.
Sure.
So
Okay.
I would think that, you know, you, if you wanna treat those separate here on Main.
That's kind of what I was thinking. I was gonna get numbers for them separately, and then was trying to come up with just what's a price per block gonna be from, so basically I've got a price per foot from one contractor. I'm waiting on it still from another one. And we could just wheel that off. I do think that we will want to spot survey and set that sidewalk right on our line. Because that's how we expect them to be around town, but we ought to verify it before we put them back. And then that's a good marker for the residents there, too, if you know where your front line's at.
So are we gonna do those out of the general fund and then?
I mean, I don't care. I want a five sitting here, but that makes sense to me, because what do we put aside for sidewalks?
Ten thousand.
Ten? Yeah, so we're gonna be at, like, I think it's some five thousand, but it's, you know, forty, forty-five hundred bucks or something like that for those three, I think, is kind of what we were looking at.
Probably do two more, maybe
So if we can maybe get a block or two in addition to that, like, let's start making some progress.
I would think that one by your dad's house would probably be, from there to the corner, would probably be the the big one to do if we have the funds. His address is
We got money. That'd be
Two fifteen
South Broadway.
From there to the end of Miss Neal's sidewalk, all the way down to the corner of Walton.
Okay, we try to actually put together some official quotes or something like that on, on a couple of segments around town, and we'll see.
You said you had a per foot cost.
Yeah, I don't even remember what it is now. Give me two seconds here. And I had them do, because we get a really good deal on stone. I said that we would supply the stone, and we'd have it dumped like wherever they're working. We'd bring a dump truck, they tear out and just put the, you know, we'll handle disposal, but they put the tear out in our dump truck, and we can bury it or take it to green cycle or whatever.
Damn, I don't
So they're doing, they're doing all the work, but we're buying stone and we're disposing.
That should, that should help us some.
If we run over the corner over there on Broadway, we probably put some sort of accessibility ramp or something.
Yes, so that's factored in there, too.
Okay.
I'll just tell you what it is. Let me find it here. Square foot, price of square foot, including labor, but not including stone, so this labor material is twelve dollars from the one quote I've got. I'm waiting on another one. And then
A foot?
Yep. So that's, yep, that's tear out, that's four inches of compacted base, that's sealer, that's rebar in it, that's brim in it, that's and it's, and he always says fiber in the concrete, too, like, it's, it'll last. And then each of those handicap intersection deals are three hundred dollars.
They're rammed.
Yeah, so we can wheel it off and get a really close idea to see how far our money could, will go, I guess, with some of these things.
I would say do it as fast as possible, especially on Main Street, get those done.
So they got some
Right now.
Cure time before festival.
Do we need to, to do that today, so that you have the
If you would like to
I make a motion
So I'm waiting on another set of numbers on those. Do you want to just say, they're both trusted people, people I trust. One of them's worked for the town, one hasn't, but I'm very familiar with both of their work. They're about the less, the least expensive option we're gonna find, too, because they're sole proprietors, they don't have some big crew, they're not doing giant jobs. So do you want a motion that, like, we approve those three, whatever the lowest is of them or something like that?
I'll make that motion, and we fix those three spots on Main Street with the lowest bid.
Okay.
And with your purview, just, you have the authority to go ahead and make the happen.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Awesome.
Those need to be fixed.
No, that's great. I appreciate that. I think that'd be a big help. Any other old business from the council?
Do you have a police report?
I didn't, haven't seen one. I think he's
I don't know, he's
Louis, he'll drop this when pulled off.
Oh, Louis won't?
Yeah.
Just spectating? Yes, sir.
Yes.
All right. We appreciate your presence. All right, we'll move on to new business, and we've got nothing on the agenda. I don't have any new business to report.
I just have one bit of new business. I met with Rob and Cook this morning.
Yes.
A little bit on this reorg. They're still A little bit on this reorg. They're still, they're still pushing for the reorg. For the communities. I know there was a public meeting, uh, last Wednesday, I believe, down at the, the middle school. And her question was this. I told her, I said, I don't think the interest from the town of Atlanta, I don't believe we're interested in reorg. And I told her I would ask the council again tonight. Do we entertain any thoughts of doing that at all? Are we interested in any more information on that? I know Cicero is, is they've, they've kind of changed their.
They're not.
Their direction.
Direction.
No, they're not. They're looking at annexation, I believe, from the town of Cicero all the way to thirty-one. Think that's their.
Isn't that in cooperation with the county on that too? It doesn't matter. That's what they should have been doing anyway.
You know, I think Robyn's put a lot of hours and her and Nicole and.
Yeah.
It's, it's a hard battle for them to.
But Arcadia is not entertaining you either. See, I don't think it could be structured in a way where you could. Essentially divide up the township between existing entities. So it's gonna be. If a reorg happened, as I understand it, it's the entire township combining with one or more other existing utility, or municipalities. So you couldn't join together and then break it apart again into something different. And that would be something that would potentially interest me and would probably interest Arcadia and Cicero as well. But I don't personally have an interest in. Like somehow combining us with the rest of Jackson Township. I don't think that really serves anybody. It probably doesn't serve anybody in Jackson Township either. Out in the coun- the county, you know, or the country, so.
We get the short end of the stick, whatever.
I believe you're right. Like if township government goes away? So there, that is another possibility is township government can be, might go away and what the state is looking for with that is they're looking for. Let me see if I remember the terminology. I can't, they basically want to, anything that can be combined. Uh, they want combined. And if you can't, they want you to basically justify your existence. So that doesn't matter to us, but the town, but the township, ta- I mean township government may be short-lived at this point. It might go away pretty quickly. I don't know. Yeah, they, they, they won't take. Sure, but they, but they can't take over the town of Atlanta.
I'm not saying they're taking over the town. They're not gonna maintain it.
No, they can't have any impact. Nope, that would only be the town of Atlanta. We're in incorporated. Yeah.
If we are not a part of and unite together, my understanding is that the county's taking over.
No.
Now, that was my understanding.
The county will take over the township government. I think that's likely, but I don't think they have any power to take over a town. Unless they could somehow demonstrate that we are not providing the citizens with their. Uh, unless they could somehow demonstrate that they, that we aren't able to provide services to our residents and somehow force an un- unincorporation. I don't know.
Still think that's what they're trying to do though.
I think at some point we will see that happen.
When all of a sudden the businesses start coming here because the county allows it.
And in fairness, I would welcome development, uh, if they wanted to join our corporate limits. The other thing is it would still be unincorporated area unless, this is the difficult thing with reorg. If they re- if it's a reorg with. If it's not two townships joining together, if it's a township and a town or a city. Uh, my understanding is that becomes, goes from being unincorporated area to incorporated area. I was at meetings for that, uh, I can't even tell you how many meetings with Mrs. Cook and with. Uh, Nicole and with the people from Cicero and with the attorneys when they were very first talking about this. And it seemed like the town would get the short end of the stick every single time. And so I brought that information back to the council. We talked it all through. I said, do you have any specific questions or do you want to come to me? What do you mean? They already did. They combined with Adams Township, but the thing that makes it easier there is that's two entities. What we're talking about here is you're going to, somebody's gonna get the short end of the stick if you're talking Cicero, Arcadia, Atlanta, Jackson. Uh, you either make your other towns islands or they cease to exist and it all gets combined into one government. But if, if we're surrounded now by incorporated land, not unincorporated land, we can't grow anymore. For what? To stop Westfield or the county or something like that? Or do we want to let it be unincorporated ground that can, that we can incorporate? Cause, uh, the county cannot make something, they can't incorporate anything. They're a county. I don't believe they could stop us from annexing unincorporated area. There's state laws about that kind of thing. I, I understand. I'm not a big fan of the county. I'm, I'm not a fan of them at all. I just don't want us to hurt ourselves. Because we're afraid of them. Oh, they put us to the tune of fifty-three thousand dollars. I mean, when, when we had the ability to run utilities to the armory. And we were the only ones that had the ability to run utilities to the armory and they cut us out of the deal without even a project design. We had plans for a preliminary engineering report anyway, and we had it in writing that we had this deal. And we submitted it for funding to the state and then they went over our heads. So, believe me, I'm not a fan of what the county are doing. Uh, but I don't want us to hurt the long-term viability of this town. With a rash reaction against the county based out of fear. I just, I don't think we're gonna be serving our people well. If we put, uh, the well-being of, and concerns of the people here in somebody who lives in Cicero's hands.
I agree, Murray. I'm, I'm not interested.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody here does.
Yeah, it's a fascinating idea. I am interested in, I don't know if any of these financial studies they've been doing. Could be used to explore public safety options more, combining of police and fire resources, something like that.
And I think township government goes away, you're going to see that.
I just. I don't see. Beyond using it as a jumping off point to collaborate in other ways, I don't see, I don't see it as being beneficial.
And, and you're right, it would be very beneficial to share fire, EMS, police, but not officially join together.
Sure, like, can we, could this be a jumping off point for the northern Hamilton County Fire Department or something like that, you know? Give us all better service at a lower price somehow, cause you could incorporate in White River Township, maybe go over into Sheridan Adams. Get some co- collaboration. I don't know. That's my, you know what I think.
Yeah, I do.
Anything else from? Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have anything for you. I'm sorry. So, are you still, you have a problem right now? Every time it rains, you've got to, okay, okay. Well, we have a five hundred thousand dollar back truck and a twenty thousand dollar camera. So, I'm sorry that we've not used either of those things to try to figure out your problem, but we'll try to figure out if there is a problem. Oh, storm drains? Storm drains are county. The storm drain, the grate, that's, yeah, that's the county. We paid for it. No, I mean, they're supposed to maintain them. So if you call, then they're supposed to come out and, and do that. We probably have. Sure, yeah, cause that's the one in the big rain event that you, you couldn't flush. Let's just see if there even is a problem. It's all been lined. So, but that doesn't mean that roots could get in around the tap or something like that, I guess. So. Okay, I'll make that a priority over the next couple of weeks. We'll, we'll figure out how to get some investigation done there. Sorry. Uh, our attorneys are working on that. There was a legal action filed against the town and so we did a counterclaim and so we can't. Directly go and do anything, just boots on the ground at the moment, but concerns, as I understand it, have been added to that counter. They've been up prior to, uh, any of that getting filed, but I don't know if they've been up here since and I'm sure people have been calling. It's pretty bad. I walk by there every night and it's. It's, i- i- it's, it's not good at all.
County was up there what, three, three weeks ago, spring?
Yeah. Um, I'll try to get an update on that.
Which I spoke with the homeowner of Wayville. She said that she was making another hose. And that's why they could have run it to a drain. Do you know anything about that?
Uh, I don't know anything about that and as I understand, she's refused to run to the drain in the alley. Even though that's the same as the one across the street. Because they think that that's what's putting water into their house. Oh, I don't know if there's any kind of order like that. I just know that, uh, it's being handled by attorneys at this point. Um, so. It's under the garage and they didn't fill it.
I think that's what's happening.
I, I do too.
I really do.
Wasn't there some, Luke was telling us Thursday, I think it was, that the county had looked in the storm drains and they were blocked.
Oh, I, I guess some of the storm drains collapsed.
Yeah, he'd say the county came out and ran a robot under their camera on wheels and.
S- some of their.
They were collapsed, so.
So they're gonna replace their.
I don't know. He didn't say what they were gonna do.
We have to get on the county ballot, have attorneys involved, because, yeah, I guess there's multiple storm drains now that they, they went and scoped and that they are falling apart.
Well, that's, that is their drain and we've been paying assessment on it forever, so.
But yeah, they had to, they, they were doing a scope and they found an access point that nobody, the county had no clue was there. And they had to dig up something, they had to dig in somebody's driveway to get it. The homeowners had no clue it was in the driveway. And the top was buried, tiered and everything like that, but the county had no clue it was an access point there. But they found it with a robot.
Well, either way, so hopefully they, they can make that drain work better, but I still don't think that's the source of all that water. That water's coming from somewhere. I'm sorry y'all have to deal with it, but I don't know anything that we can do beyond what's being done.
So does she wanna run the hose across the road to that storm drain just?
I have no idea. She just told me that she needed another hose, now whether or not, you know, she's gonna run it there or in the alley. I have no idea.
It is the same drain. Okay, did you have another question?
I did. I noticed fluid waste down there with Luke. Was fluid waste there for the town or were they?
As I understand it, they were for the county. So Luke probably just stopped by to see if they needed anything, I imagine. I don't know. I haven't talked to him about that, but I do know that they came. They notified us before they came up, which they don't even have to do because it's their drain, but that they would be up here doing some maintenance and. Yeah, so, but they probably just contracted fluid waste to do that work, would be my guess. Alright, uh, any other new business from the council tonight? Anything? Yes, ma'am.
I've seen and then, and there have been other people, I've seen Andy at the water plant. Could I ask what he's doing there?
Yeah, we addressed this at the last meeting, so he's never been there, not supervised. He had some personal property.
But who supervised him?
Me. No, it's me.
Why you?
Why not me? I'm the only one that offered to help. I asked the four others sitting next to me if they wanted to help and they didn't say anything. Why? Luke's not his boss. I'm Luke's boss.
I have no problem. You've mentioned Luke. Has Luke been promoted?
No.
Has he been given a raise? He's working his butt off. Constantly I see him working. And all hours. Have anything been done for him to compensate him in this, all this mess?
He got a raise earlier this year.
Earlier this year?
Yeah.
That was before.
Yeah.
Come on. He's doing.
We're falling behind. That's not his fault, but, but, um.
Well.
We're trying to find him help.
Good job and I would hate to see him leave because he's not being treated fairly and that's why I'm asking. I wanna know that he is being treated fairly for the job he's doing. He's very dedicated.
There has been conversation concerning that and there will continue to be more conversation concerning that.
Y'all recognize the good job he does.
Yes, we do.
Because if we lose him, I would be very disappointed. I will tell you. I see him out there and he's working his butt off for every one of us. You know, I'm not saying he does anything specific for me or anybody else, but I see him on a regular basis. I'll be out riding the golf cart or I'll be going somewhere and I see him working. More than I ever saw Andy work.
Murray, that has to be.
I just think he deserves some recognition and compensation.
Any compensation discussion for, or promotion has to be a.
Uh, if we did like a performance review, we could do it that way.
Yeah.
So that's exactly the session.
I mean, he's doing the job that Andy did, right?
No, no, he's not.
Not totally, but pretty much.
No, not even close.
Y'all praise Andy too much.
No, it's a fact.
No, we, we hired someone to do the job that Andy did. That would be Al.
That would be who?
Al. He is the operator from Arcadia and he is our operator here, our licensed operator for sewer and water.
But that's not even, that's not even all the job. We're not, I can't tell you.
Luke gets a certification.
Right, right.
I told Luke to give me.
To encourage him?
Yes, and I told Luke, I've told Luke, uh, three times in the last two months, get me a list of the books that you need and we will buy them for you. Like, we want him to succeed. We want him to get his licenses and stuff. The point is, it still takes time. I understand what you're saying. Yes, we appreciate Luke. We wanna make sure that, uh, he is able to continue to grow.
Well, I mean, it doesn't look like he's gonna go anywhere or be compensated in any way. He might leave us.
Sure.
I mean.
I, I've also, I've also talked to him and, and, you know, we've had a great discussion about, uh, what the town's needs are and, and he said he wants some more responsibility, but he can't take it all. And, and that's what I'm saying is there's a lot of stuff that, uh.
He's still learning, obviously. So whatever came of the, um, ordeal of this idea. Are you guys paying that fine for him?
There, so as of now, there's not been any fines.
There was to town.
Nope. I'm correct in saying that, right? To my understanding, there's not been a fine that's assessed at this time.
I saw the town was fined ten thousand dollars and Luke got one.
I don't know of a fine to the town. Uh, if it's a warning to Luke, though, it's a warning to Luke. Luke's not a certified operator, so, um.
And I understand that, but he's still gonna want me to still do it.
No, he wasn't told to go dump that truck. He was not told to go dump that truck. We wouldn't order him to do something illegal. I wouldn't order him to do something illegal. I would not put him in that position. He was trying to be helpful and he made a mistake.
I'd be more concerned about the high commissions of the funding numbers.
I'm sorry to every one of you, but Mr. Dixon, I have no use for you.
That's okay.
You have defended.
I will keep on.
That all these people.
I will keep on giving my time to you and everybody else in this town. I'm sorry you feel like.
Jennifer, do we, we have not been. Paid a fine.
Talk to some of you.
We've not paid a fine for my debt. We haven't been billed a, for anything?
For the record, we did not tell Luke to go dump sewage at our water plant.
Yeah.
Okay? On the record.
Here's my thing. Where was it dumped for?
Did he dump it where everyone else had dumped it years before?
So here's the problem. I tried looking into this. I thought it through very carefully. I've talked to Luke. I've talked to, uh, Andy as well, and you may or may not care at all what he says. Luke says that they dumped there. They also dumped at the sewer plant. But Luke says we've dumped sewage there. But I only know of that truck being used three times since we've had it. And we've had it for a few years now for any type of sewer work. And Luke said we dumped at the sewer plant. So I think Luke misunderstood what was happening when they were dumping before. The majority of that truck's use has been storm drains and it's been hydroexcavating for water. So they've used that to dig dirt, clean dirt, and they've used, and they dumped that out at the water plant. And I think that he got confused and thought, oh, we just dumped the truck at the water plant. Even though he told me they dumped at the sewer plant. So I think he just got confused. Uh, it was a mistake. And as of now, the town has gotten an official notice about that and a violation notice. But to my knowledge, we haven't had any fines. They wanna know what we're gonna do to prevent it in the future. And I've sent them a letter regarding that. Hopefully it satisfies them.
How would they know? How would they know that Luke did dump it there?
I don't know. Evidently somebody saw him.
Somebody called I do.
It doesn't matter. Yeah, I mean. It, it, even if it is, here's the thing, even if, even if it is Andy, can we get mad if we're doing something illegal and somebody calls and points it out?
Not when Andy's done that shit before. How do you know he's done that?
How do you, how do you, I just told you. I just told you that he dumped clean, stuff we know is clean out there. Luke's told me he dumped at the sewer plant. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. It really doesn't matter. We're moving forward.
I have one more piece of business. I will be at conference at our next, um, council meeting. So I was talking to Scott. Can we change our next council meeting to the eighteenth instead of the eleventh of August? And then that way, um, he can be here and we can, um, with the cameras and whatnot.
So do you?
Do you like?
The eighteenth and then the twenty-fifth?
Well, he, he can't come that following. We, I'll be gone all week at conference from the tenth to the fourteenth.
Or do we, do we need to have two meetings in August?
If you guys are okay with just having the twenty-fifth, that would be fine.
I'm fine with that. Same too.
Yeah, I think if anything really pressing comes up, we could figure out how to do a special meeting sometime.
Okay. So we'll cancel next council meeting on the eleventh and we'll just go with the twenty-fifth. Okay.
Does that give you time for the, any festival meetings? Do we need to have one of those anytime soon?
I think we're fine with that right now. We're just kinda maintaining on that. Um, I can get all the report together and give to you guys if you want me to.
On the twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Yeah. Line by.
It'll be the twenty-fifth of August.
Everybody hear that? We're canceling our first meeting in August, so we'll have a meeting the twenty-fifth of August. And if, if anything pressing comes up, we'll schedule a public special meeting. But otherwise, we'll just plan on one meeting next month. All right. Any other questions or comments from anybody here?
Thinking about the state of the town with Riz.
Oh, yeah. Riz went to that.
Oh, you went to?
Yeah, I did. I represented the town at that. It, uh, actually, uh, I represented it from Cicero, Arcadia, superintendent from Sheridan Schools, I represented it from Hamilton Heights Schools and myself. They had a panel, and several people in the audience, and they just asked us questions about what was going on in the town, what, you know, what we felt like the future held and, uh, most of the topic, this, this, both schools spoke at length about, you know, the future, future growth and everything. Cicero spoke a little bit about what's going on down there and their growth. The gentleman from Arcadia was not present. He was in the audience, but he was not on the panel. And then Robin Cook was there as well. She represented Jackson Township. But it was just, uh, they just asked us questions.
Was there a public meeting?
It was not.
Chamber of Commerce, right?
Chamber of Commerce meeting. That's like, there was only one representative from each.
So they wouldn't have a forum.
So they wouldn't have a forum. It was just, uh, it used to be called the Hamilton North Chamber. And they, they recently, in the past year, changed the name of that to One Zone. Uh, Jack Russell is the, is the president of that. And typically they meet annually. They used, they used to meet at the town of Arcadia. I think the last couple of years they've met at Exiric. So that's all that entailed.
Been interested to be able to attend that one.
Yeah, yeah, it was, you know, they just ask us standard, standard questions, uh, you know.
I didn't hear discuss the last meeting about going there.
Yeah, yeah. No decisions were made, no, you know, they asked me what our, our goals were for the town of Atlanta. I said, just to, to improve. I mean, you know, to constantly, you know, try to make things better. That's, you know, we don't have anything huge going on. I didn't touch on the, the library at all. Uh, but we just, we talked about.
That's a curious question. And you're discussing the last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it is. You're welcome.
Anything else before we adjourn? Well, thank you all for being here. I do appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Sign our claims.
Sign our claims.
Second.
All in favor? All right.